So we will call the April sixteenth Committee of Home Meeting to order. It's four o'clock. Correctly call the role, please.
Commissioner Kissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Heffler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales.
President.
Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs. Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
You have six present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is a time when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come up to the podium. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed next to Lindy and once your three minutes are up, your time to speak has finished. This is a time to provide input in a professional respectful manner. There any members of the public who wish to make public comment? Hello, sir.
Hello, I'm Rod Hougham from Scotts, Michigan. I'm here to speak up against the pods that are being proposed on Lake Street. Many reasons why the pods on Lake Street are a bad idea. Both the proposal location and the cost. Location is reported to be contaminated, placing the pods residents in health risk. Location is central to a couple of schools, the Expo Center and the restaurants. I frequent Juliana's Restaurant on a regular basis, and if you were to put the pods there, I would be very hesitant to go into that area, not only to Juliana's, but I also would hesitate to go to the Expo because wherever you put those pods, there has a tendency to be an increase in drug use and handling and a variety of other crimes that go on near those pods. I am concerned for the safety of my family. Homeless locations have a higher drug use and crime, panhandling, etc. Fifty pods proposed is a bad location. Costs of twenty to twenty to forty thousand dollars per pod, based on the one to two million dollars proposed, is not very cost effective for fifty pods. Lower income and fixed income residents could lose their homes because they can't pay three to five thousand dollars in property taxes and get thrown out and become homeless. You could help maybe two to four hundred people pay their taxes and save their homes for the same amount of money, but you're willing to spend the same amount of money to house fifty people. So the location and the cost makes the decision unreasonable and not cost effective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others who wish to make public comment? All right, CNN Dina, do we have anyone online?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Dana. So next up, we have a presentation of Michigan State University Extension Annual Report given by the District Director.
Hi Chair, we just learned that Julie, the Director for the Extension, she actually had it for the seven PM, if that's okay, if we move it to the seven PM meeting.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll move down to the presentation of amendments to the Kalamazoo County Property Assess, Clean Energy, or PACE report and PACE program update. Oh, I skipped Dave. Sorry, Dave. You're up next.
Thank you and good evening. I'm glad we get twenty minutes now. That's the good news. I'm setting my own timer, so we're on it. Well, good evening Commissioners. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight to share with you the 2023 County Park and Expo Center Annual Report. It's been pre-COVID since we've done this in front of the Board of Commissioners, and we really appreciate the opportunity to tell a little bit about what we do and some of the successes and challenges that we have. So I'm going to jump right into it. We did, hopefully Dana has a PowerPoint sheet up. There it is. Okay, so Dana has our PowerPoint up, and we did provide hard copies of our report as well. I'd like to start by just talking a little bit about what I appreciate. I appreciate my job every day. I really appreciate the team of people I have that work for Kalamazoo County Parks. I appreciate a great administration in this Board of Commissioners supporting what we do every day. So I want to start with a thank you. With that, I'm going to jump into some of the highlights of our accomplishments. So our park attendance in 2023, so when we talk about parks, that's all eight properties. We had just over 1.6 million visits. Our camping revenue was at a record level, record number of campsites rented last year, a 10% growth in revenue at just over $367,000. We were also able to complete a really great collaborative project with the Road Commission, the city and the township, 0.3 miles of sidewalk in front of the Expo Center on Lake Street. So that's a great addition to the neighborhood. We also completed engineering. This was an ARPA funded project for the HVAC Improvement Project at the Expo Center, and we adopt, we developed and adopted the Woolham County Park Master Plan, and that work is well underway. More to come on that in a little bit. And we also are significantly done developing our 2025 to 2029 Park and Recreation Master Plan and look forward to having that to you for approval later this year. One of our goals this year was really talking about, you know, looking at how we impact DEI. I mean, it really is a core pillar of the county parks and Expo Center. It's woven into what we do every day. A lot of times, you know, I don't think we necessarily, it's intentional, but we just, it's the people we serve in our community. Some of the goals, and you were part of some of these accomplishments, we increased our starting wage for all of our employees to fifteen dollars an hour. We held the Free Day in 2023 on Juneteenth as sort of a joint celebration of the county parks and of that new county holiday and a longstanding traditional holiday. We started plowing the trail through the north side of Kalamazoo after getting some feedback from users, recognizing that that's a mode of transportation for people in that community. Unfortunately, we only did it, I think, two or three times, but we're ready to continue that into the future. And the other thing that we really looked at was the Expo Center, and we'll have more details on this, but we hosted over sixteen events that really celebrate what DEI is in Kalamazoo, and those events attracted over 17,000 participants. The other thing we're starting to do and really working on is analyzing data that we already have or that we need to collect in the system. So in the report, you'll see our first attempt at that, which was we looked at over 550 picnic shelter reservations, and we looked at who are the people making those reservations and where do they come from in our community? And I think just a high level summary, the people in our urban core are overrepresented at those county park uses, and a big part of it is, I mean, parks are a green space that a lot of residents don't have, and it's an important role that we provide in our community. The other set of data that we collect, we started in 2020, but we've been doing user satisfaction surveys. So, you know, what is the experience of people that use the parks? There's four or five questions that we ask. In the report we gave just sort of the high level, how satisfies are you with the Kalamazoo County Parks? You can see we're right at nine or eight point nine for the last four years, and it also goes down and breaks that down by individual parks. We also provided some pictures in our report. Those are actual quotes that we got from park users. The other important role that we play in our community is we are stewards of fifteen, 1,574 acres, and managing those natural resources is a top priority that I don't think we talk about much. But we protect and preserve significant and sensitive natural and cultural resources in Kalamazoo County, and we make sure that they can be handed on to future generations is our responsibility. We ensure long-term protection, preservations, and sustainability of all of our park resources. Some of our accomplishments in that area, we have worked on restoration of over forty acres of native prairie. We have a very active invasive species removal goals and projects that we work on throughout all of the county parks, forest management and habitat management. Those are some of the residents and wildlife of Kalamazoo County Parks. And just very high level budget, I know you see lots of numbers in your report, but it was interesting for us to look at the numbers the way they're not presented in our traditional budgets, which was where does our revenue come from by use? So we provided a chart that just sort of shows the various revenue streams that support the Kalamazoo County Parks. Obviously, we do receive accommodation tax that primarily goes to the Expo Center operations and maintenance and capital. We do not receive any general fund dollars. So out of just around 1.8 million dollars, the majority of our revenue is self-sufficient. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Mandy Eldred, and she is the Expo Center Sales Manager, and she's going to go through her report and cover some of the highlights of the Expo Center. And when we're done, we'll answer any questions you have.
Hi, I'm Mandy Eldred. I am the Facility and Event Services Manager at the Kalamazoo Expo Center. So 2023 was a really great year at the Expo Center. We were busier than ever. We hosted 121 events with 417 event days, and twelve of these were new events. The Expo Center was busy 90% of weekends in 2023, and we had over 257,000 people visit. Next slide. This month, we surpassed our Expo Center rental sales goals by 16% with rental sales of 485,000, and the overall Expo Center revenue was up 20% to 595,000. So the Expo Center provides significant economic impact to the Kalamazoo community with an estimated 14 million in visitor spending. We know that the majority of our visitors are coming from within 100 mile radius, and that they're spending money within the community, both including directly at the Expo Center events, but also with visits to local restaurants, bars, retail, etc., before and after their visit. And then about 12% of our visitors come from over 100 miles away, so they're generating hotel stays, in addition to the other spending in Kalamazoo County. So I want to take a moment just to highlight three of the really unique events that we host at the Expo Center and how they impact Kalamazoo. And so the first is the Grand Rapids Comic Con. That event was actually just held this past weekend. We had people from all over the universe, as you can see. So the event was first held in Kalamazoo in 2023, and it drew over 11,000 visitors throughout the weekend. The event sets up on Wednesday and Thursday, and it's open to the public Friday through Sunday. And the Grand Rapids Comic Con brings in comic and literary guests, celebrities from film, television, artists, and other exhibitors and vendors from all around the country. And so they're generating hotel stays in our community from Wednesday through Monday, and many of the participants, as well as people visiting the show, eat, drink, shop in Kalamazoo while they're here. And then the next event is the UKC Premier Dog Show. So the United Kennel Club is headquartered right here in Kalamazoo, and it's the largest all-breed performance dog registry in the world. They register dogs from all 50 states and 25 foreign countries. And UKC holds their five-day Nationals event here in Kalamazoo in June. So participants come from all around the country and Canada. They start arriving in Kalamazoo on Monday. They stay for seven or eight nights, and according to information that we collected along with Discover Kalamazoo, this individual event has an economic impact of over 500,000. And then the last event I'll touch on is the Black Business Expo, which is held in August. It has been at the Expo Center since 2019 and is put on by Nicole Triplet and Black Wall Street Kalamazoo. And this is a Expo is a business center that showcases black entrepreneurs and supports black-owned businesses by increasing networking opportunities and economic sales. And the event attracted local businesses along with others from around Michigan and the surrounding Midwest. So Kalamazoo County is really committed to providing services which promote health equity and well-being in the county. And in 2023, the Expo Center hosted many events where members from all around the community could feel engaged, included, and represented. And these events alone had over 17,000 in attendance, and you'll see a complete list of those events included in the report. And then we're really looking forward to 2024 and 2025 with even more events being planned. Our expected weekend occupancy in 2024 is 20 or is 94%, with the majority of our events returning, and at least nine new events being planned for 2024 and 2025. And with over 120 events, more than 90% weekend occupancy and the economic impact of 14 million in visitor spending, we feel the Expo Center continues to play a really important role in our community by providing great opportunities for residents and visitors alike that can't be found anywhere else.
And just a couple of closing comments. One is, I think we can share this today, that the Grand Rapids Comic Con next year will become the Kalamazoo Comic Con. So we signed three-year contracts with that event that moved from Grand Rapids to Kalamazoo, so that's a big win for Mandy and her team and for the Expo Center and for Kalamazoo County. The last thing I just briefly wanted to touch on is a quick update of Woolham Preserve. I'm sure people ask you on the street what's going on at Woolham Preserve or the former Rota Quan, but we are well underway on implementation of the master plan, making very good progress, building renovations, water lines, utilities. Consumers' energy is disconnecting all the gas meters, and we're just in the final phase of demolition of the final 31 structures. We're hoping to start later this week. Once those buildings come down, we're looking forward to at least a soft opening of getting hiking trails, lake access, and those facilities open for the public. We're still planning on that this spring, maybe the last day of spring, but we're still planning on it for this spring. So good progress, a lot of work to be done, absolutely beautiful piece of property. It's going to be really take our county parks sort of to the next level. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Chair. I had some people asking questions about the use of kayaks in Mark and Glenn and some of the other parks. As far as I know, I believe they're not right, so I think they're permissible, or are they not permissible in the parks?
We do not allow kayaks at Scotts Mill or Mark and Glenn. We don't have any boats at those two facilities. All the other county parks, they're accepted. We will not have outside kayaks at Woolham Preserve, only rental boats that we provide to limit invasive species into the lake system. to limit invasive species into the lake system.
Because there was some question because they saw some postage that, you know, you can't have motorboats, this and that, but they didn't say anything about kayaks.
We do not allow kayaks at Mark and Glen.
At Mark and Glen, okay, that was one I was asked about.
Yep.
Also, how are we coming with the Trailway project to complete it from the far side of Kalamazoo to the Fort Custer or Battle Creek, I should say.
Yeah, we're just working on the RFP for engineering, final construction, engineering, and we're hoping to have that in this upcoming quarter to have a design firm on board and then work out. This year, our goal is to finalize the construction design for that project. Then we'll have to work on funding, which likely will be a multi-year effort just because of the M.Doc. grant process that we have to go through.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of quick, first a comment. Great job to you and your team over not just the last year, but over the last five, six, seven, ten years. You really transformed that Parks Department into self-sustaining and has the ability to expand the Woolen Preserve. I had a quick question on the growth of your camping revenue. That's that's another, you know, highlight. A great thing. The new Woolen Preserve Park, are you going to utilize, you know, quite a bit of camping space on that? I haven't seen the final master plan.
And we're not planning to have overnight recreational camping. It will be more group and youth camping type of services we're going to provide at that property. So we're not going to have a traditional campground. It's going to be more a lot for youth groups, so church groups, YNCAs, those types of groups.
Okay, cool.
And then the last one is accommodations tax. I know that's a big portion of your revenue. Enforcement of that has kind of been sort of a sticky issue I've heard from Discover Kalamazoo and others from trying to get. Are you having similar problems with the collection of that accommodations tax and the time?
So the county treasurer is responsible for the collection. It's not horrible.
Yeah.
Work can be done, but there's only a couple of properties that are, I think, are problems right now. So I think the majority of properties here in Kalamazoo County are paying their accommodation tax, and there's no issue. I think it's like one or two currently.
Two, two properties.
That we're having issues with. But I mean, I think for the most part, it's a great program. It does what it's intended to do. It supports the Expo Center and Discover.
Absolutely. I wouldn't wouldn't touch that that ratio or formula. Don't worry about that. I think it I think it serves its purpose, for sure. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gussler?
And I just encourage everybody, if you didn't get a county park pass, I heard from one commissioner tonight, please try to get out to your county parks this summer because just see what we do, see how people use and enjoy these properties and the benefit to our our community. Because, you know, it's overwhelming sometimes what we do on a given weekend. This weekend, we have a soccer tournament. We're going to have a hundred and eighty-seven teams? About a hundred and eighty-seven soccer teams or a hundred and eighty-seven soccer games at River Oaks County Park. So transitioning teams, that's over three hundred plus teams we're going to be moving. You know, some will play multiple games in a weekend. But I mean, it's a, we'll have over ten thousand people at River Oaks this weekend playing soccer. So it's fun. It keeps life interesting. Every weekend is something different. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, here we go. One more question.
Yeah, some time ago, and I don't know if you were involved, Dave, or Mandy, but it was at Wing Stadium, and they had a curling competition. Is that likely to reappear, or is that off your books and somebody else's responsibility?
So we have had some had some conversations with the curling community just because they are probably going to lose their home. So that we've had some discussions with them, just if with the new arena and what's happening at Wing Stadium. So those are conversations we're going to continue into next year. It's definitely on our radar.
I was flabbergasted to know that, I think it was the national championships that were held there. And yeah, it was hardly anybody in the audience, but, you know, you had beer and you had curling. I mean, come on, what more do you need, eh?
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so next we can hear from Leaning Green, Michigan, on the PACE report.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner Ray and Commissioners. Rachel Grover, Planning Department Director, and I am here today to give you, introduce you to Mary Freeman from Leaning Green, Michigan, but it is to give an update on the PACE program in Michigan and the needed amendment to our county PACE report. The initial PACE report was approved by the Commission in two thousand and fifteen and then amended in two thousand and twenty-one. And then also in two thousand and twenty-one, we had our first PACE project that occurred in Cooper Township and at the, right at the border with Algen County. It needed approval by both, by two entities. And that was for an anaerobic digester for the JBS facility there that turns all of their waste byproduct into energy, and it is really provides about ninety percent of their energy usage and eliminated the off-gassing, which was not a good smell from the facility. So that was a really great project for this type of PACE program, Property-Assessed Clean Energy. In your May eighth agenda will be the resolution that will be needed to pass to update the PACE report with the amendments, and the amendments are needed due to legislative changes at the state level. So with that, I'll introduce Mary Freeman with Leaning Green, Michigan, and she can give you some updates and information on the amendments. And yeah, Nina has applied.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know how many of you were here in two thousand and fifteen. Is there, can I see a show of hands? Couple? And how about in two thousand and twenty-one? A few more. Okay, so there might be still a few people who, raise your hand if you don't know what PACE is. Great. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of skim through, just give you an overview, and then my numbers at the end, and we can talk on the phone afterwards if you have additional questions. But I want to go five minutes of give you idea of the program and then five minutes to take questions I can, well, I don't know, I guess I could expand. I'm going to try and fit in my ten minutes. So this is, this is our team. There's four of us. We have two attorneys, myself, I'm the owner, and I do a lot of the government relations and also actually operations these days. I'm actually studying up on my pivot tables. So and then we have a communications person. So next slide. PACE was established in Michigan in two thousand and ten. But it was, there was no funding for local governments to create their own PACE programs. So in two thousand and twelve, I and some of my colleagues launched Leaning Green, Michigan as a private enterprise to administer Property-Assessed Clean Energy on behalf of local governments. And since then, we have included fifty-eight local governments, thirty-three counties, and the rest are cities and townships as PACE districts, which are able to use this economic development tool. And we, seventy-five percent of Michigan's population is now in a PACE district. So PACE was developed because the idea, I'm sorry. The problem was that there's energy efficiency, water efficiency, and renewable energy projects could be extremely expensive, and we wanted to create the opportunity for commercial property owners to upgrade their properties or build new properties, highly efficient technologies that would save money and actually save more money than what they're paying and making their loan payments. Next slide. There are five parties to any PACE deal, and the local government is included because of the nature of the special assessment agreement. The the way that this security works is it's a hundred percent upfront, long-term loan that is secured by a special assessment against the property. We did set it up so that there are no taxpayer dollars involved, so that that we administer the program, that it's directly between the commercial property owner and the PACE lender, but the local government does need to be involved at the moment of a project. First of all, to say, we do want this project in our community, A, because you can always not approve any project, and B, to help us create that special assessment. Next slide. So these loans, they're repaid over a period of up to twenty-five years. They're fixed interest. They follow the market, so they're based on a ten-year T-note. The property owners get a hundred percent of the money upfront through escrow so that they can get started on their construction, and then they can pay it back over that long term. Next slide. I mentioned that the savings do exceed the repayment, the loan payments. So there are a huge range of qualified properties, commercial, agricultural, industrial, multifamily housing, four-plus units, nonprofits, houses of worship, private schools. We cannot fund any government properties or residential properties in Michigan. That each state is different. There are thirty-two states with active PACE programs, and that is a constraint of the Michigan program, no government properties and no residential homes. The qualified upgrades are also extremely broad. We do, we require people to do a very detailed audit of the technologies they want to use so that we can be sure that they meet the requirements of the PACE statute, which is primarily do they save money in the long term? So I did add on, well, okay, so those are some of the areas, energy efficiency, water efficiency, EV charging stations are eligible. We've had a lot of people, a lot of communities build senior living facilities, and then they do low-flow toilets and low-flow showers, and all of their plumbing is highly efficient, and then that saves them a lot of money in those kinds of facilities. Next slide. Next slide. So on April first, we had, this was something that we've been working on for five or six years. We've had many people come to us who had a HUD mortgage, and even though they had a multifamily property four plus, they could not get a PACE loan in Michigan because Michigan, we at Leaning Green, Michigan, were not HUD-approved. And actually, of the thirty-two programs, there's only three others. We're the fourth in the country to get HUD approval. And basically, it was a rather rigorous process of explaining our program to HUD, both the national and the regional offices, and adding some constraints to projects that are HUD-mortgaged. They have a higher standard, and so we now have an agreement with HUD that we will hold any HUD projects to this higher standard, which includes getting approval from HUD. So that's our letter on the right. We worked on that for so long, and we're really, really excited about it. Next. Um. So today we have financed seventy-nine projects, total of two hundred and eighty-four million dollars in private investment coming into Michigan from national PACE lenders. The security provided by the special assessment is extremely strong and very popular, and it is really doing very well around the country as a loan tool. A lot of retirement and annuity funds are investing in PACE because they like the fixed interest and the long-term nature of the loan. And those are some of the savings on the side. So those, those are, oh, wow, the slide isn't in there. I'm sorry. Okay, so the main reason I'm here today is to tell you about the updates to the program. The amendments were passed last year, actually, and then they went into effect in February. That changed the PACE statute slightly. And it was two different bills. The first bill made the savings guarantee, which actually requires legally that the loan payments be less than the savings be waivable by the commercial property owner. That may seem kind of counterintuitive, but in order to get that savings guarantee, they usually had to pay for it. So they had to pay the contractor, sort of like an insurance, to get the savings guarantee, and we had a lot of complaints from property owners about that. We know we get the savings. We don't want to have to pay that extra, that extra fee. And so now it is optional for upgrading projects. The property owner can decide what they want to do. For new construction, there is no longer a savings guarantee at all because that was always quite difficult, actually, to do a comparison to see whether you were making the savings because there wasn't a building there in the first place. So that was kind of a common sense change. That's the first bill. The second bill adds a whole new category of fundable activities to PACE that it's called environmental hazard projects. And it adds four different things. Lead and PFAS mitigation, lead pipe removal, protection against severe weather, and mitigation of effects of flood and drought, which comes like severe weather, but, I mean, there's lots of kinds of severe weather. So so these are new areas that can now be funded by PACE. The examples of states that have these kind of environmental aspects to PACE, or California, you can use PACE financing for earthquake protection, and in Florida, you can use it for hurricane hurricane protection of your property. So now in Michigan, it's an option. We haven't had anyone, I mean, it just happened in February, so we haven't had anyone take up on it yet. We don't know what it's going to look like exactly, but we have allowed a lot of inquiries, especially about the pollutants. And because a lot of construction projects, one of the first things they have to do, if they could put that in their PACE loan, it's just, it's an added, it's an added benefit for them. So that's my quick, 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 quick and easy. I'm super happy to jump on the phone afterwards with anyone who has additional questions. And but if you have questions now, please.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Commissioner Gussler?
Thank you, Chair. You even had a slide in your presentation, but you jumped right past it concerning EV charging stations. They are eligible.
They are eligible, and actually, most of the hotels that have gone up in the last three years have included that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you know how many, you talked about the one in Cooper Township. How many other PACE programs have there been in Kalamazoo County? Is that just the only one?
Yeah, Kalamazoo County is one of ten counties that only has one project. There are, there are six counties that have five or more projects. And, you know, it's, it's a little, not exactly understandable. You know, I think some people take up on it and they promote it, and they get more people to do projects, and we're always trying to figure out what's the, what's the magic. But Ottawa County has a lot of projects. Grand Traverse County has a lot of projects. And then, not surprisingly, Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne have the most, Wayne County being the most at twenty-six, so almost a quarter of the, yeah, about a quarter of the projects that we have are in Wayne County, not Detroit, but like Taylor, Luvonia, also Detroit, but it's spread out over the whole county. Big counties, small counties have all had some, but, you know, we're always talking to people every day to try to help people understand how to use PACE. The biggest barrier to PACE is understanding how it works.
The interest rates, the rising interest rates of that, I mean, you mentioned it was a fact tied to the ten-year T-bill. Has that had effects on some of the projects with the increase in rates?
Yeah, absolutely. Although, interesting, we, we had a very good year last year, even though. And this year, we had our best first quarter ever. We closed, we never closed, we mostly don't close projects in the first quarter at all. This year, we closed four, and we closed another one last week. So and the interest rates are still high. So, you know, people are doing it anyway. You know, they, they need to move ahead with their, whatever they've planned, and it doesn't seem to be as much of a barrier as we thought it was going to be.
The savings with the increase in utility rates, utility cost, gas and water and everything else is probably just as much or close to. That in two thousand and fifteen, when we, when we passed, that was one of the very things I was very proud of. I countless hours with Andy Levin, talking, talking this issue and trying to get Kalamazoo to opt in. So, you know, if we can promote it in any way as a commissioner, or how can I get this, this information out to some of the businesses in our community? I mean, it's a great free tool, basically, that doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, that looks for, you know, energy efficiencies. It's going to, you know, green, and it saves money, so it wins both ways, but.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's a really great promotion. I mean, Rachel has been fantastic, honestly. As an economic development partner for us, she responds to all of our inquiries, sends people our way. We talk to people, but we, you know, if you all can help with that, we, I am going to follow up to make sure that the new program report, if possible, is on your website somewhere. Economic development meetings and things like that, if I can come and talk with people, if you have any any groups that you're a part of and you'd like me to come and speak with them, I'm happy to do that. You know, getting the word out is, is the biggest challenge.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me today.
Have a good day. All right, next we have review of accounts payable and payroll disbursements, Director Post.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Pro-Tom, Commissioners. We have an accounts payable claim, list totaling two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-eight cents presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners has asked to approve claims totaling two million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Payroll dispersment totaling three million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents represented for the April second special, April twelfth general special, and April fifteenth elected payrolls. There's no conflicts of interest. Welcome, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? CNN, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll now have the monthly investment report. Chief Deputy Treasurer, Tyler White.
Thank you, Chair. Reporting on the county's investment portfolio as of March thirty-first, previously sent by administration. As of March thirty-first, the county's investment portfolio has a par value balance of one-hundred-and-sixty-five million, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, and a market value of one-hundred-and-sixty-four million, one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand and seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars flat. That's a variance of par to market value of one million, forty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. For context, March's market values had a seventy-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-five-dollar increase from February to March, but like last month, this won't have any impact on us unless we were to liquidate our entire portfolio. I'll repeat again, just like last month, please don't. We'll continue to keep the board advised of any changes and updates as we receive them, but we're not concerned about this one-month change. As for actual earnings on the month, the portfolio earned six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents on an average daily balance of one-hundred-and-sixty-two million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. This is an effective rate of return on the county's investments of four-point-five-eight percent. This rate is inclusive of all realized gains and losses on sales and maturities of U.S. Treasury notes through our partner managed account, which has a current yield of five-point-four percent. Our year-to-date earnings total one million, eight-hundred-six thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars and forty-two cents, and this is also inclusive of all realized gains, losses, as well as amortization of investment premiums and discounts. And of this one-point-eight million that we've earned so far, one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents relates to general fund investments. So of the one-point-eight, one-point-one relates to general fund. Note that if we assume the next three quarters follow a similar trend as the first quarter, we'd be on track to earn about seven-point-two million dollars on the year. That's assuming that interest rates hold and this is where the news suggests that rate cuts will be a little more delayed. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, inflation for March was three-point-five percent and this is an increase from three-point-two percent in February. The Bureau noted that the indices for shelter and gasoline contributed over half the monthly increase across all items, and this is the same note the Bureau had for February as well. Note that our four-point-five-eight percent return for the month still exceeds inflation, but the news again suggests that rate cuts will be further delayed. Three-point-five percent inflation is spread across multiple categories. The biggest, especially those that we'd be concerned about here, are shelter with five-point-seven percent, energy services or utilities, three-point-one percent. The largest increase was transportation services, not necessarily something that we would use. It's mass transit, things like that, but that's ten-point-seven percent over the last year. But with all of this in mind, the increase of three-tenths of a percent as opposed to a decrease, the Fed's target is still two percent. So the rate cuts that we've been anticipating over the course of, at this point, a year now, just haven't materialized. We don't anticipate they'll turn around and cut them anytime soon if they're trying to get to that two percent mark and at this point it just means that we're able to lock in higher rates for longer. We're still trying to get CDs and as more of them mature, we can lock in more at higher rates. We're hoping to do so, but at this moment, we're thinking, at least the Treasurer and I, sometime, maybe early summer, the Fed doesn't like to appear political, so probably not towards the election, maybe one this summer, maybe one this fall, but, and maybe one after the election, but there's no exact data on that to suggest when any of that will occur, but we'll keep you all posted. But with all of that, I'd be happy to take any questions on any of this and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Tyler. Any questions? Commissioner Gussel.
Thank you, Chair. It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. Tyler, you've done a great job, I think, in the short time you've been doing these presentations of keeping it as straightforward and as easy to understand as possible. I know that in order to get to that point, you've done a whole lot of gyrations behind the scenes and I, I appreciate you dumbing it down for guys like me. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you next month. All right. Any other items? A proclamation honoring the Rotary Club of Dixburg for one-hundred years of service. The first reading, anybody like to read it? Well, thank you, Commissioner Blue. It's volunteer week too, I think.
Proclamation recognizing Rotary Club of Vicksburg. We have the proclamation recognizing proclamation, I see in the paper there. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg was chartered in May twenty-fourth, nineteen-twenty-four to serve the community of Vicksburg through the Tenet of Rotary International Organization, service above self. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has served the greater Vicksburg area through charitable works and support for the past one-hundred years. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg began with fifteen charter members and has seen over three-hundred members join the club since its beginning. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg began with small projects such as driving disabled children to treatment and therapy in Grand Rapids and providing activities for young boys in the community. Over the past century, projects have grown to assisting the Vicksburg Community Schools, industrial trade students with the restoration of the Union Railroad Depot to become the Vicksburg Historical Museum, the construction of the buildings in the Vicksburg Historic Village and the re-establishing the historic John Vickers Mill Race. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg organized and mobilized a hay lift to Michigan's upper peninsula during a decimating snow emergency to provide hay and feed for starving cattle, which according to the farmers who received the aid, saved the animals from starvation and farms from financial ruin. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has participated in worldwide charitable projects, providing clean water, immunizations, and educational materials to third-world countries. And whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has been playing an instrumental role in eradicating polio throughout the world in cooperation with Rotary International and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg for over sixty-five years produced a musical slash comedy variety show, The Rotary Showboat, known far and wide for Clean Family Fund as its annual major fundraiser. And whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has created and endowed a fund through the Kalamazoo Community Foundation to guarantee funds for future charitable needs in perpetuity. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has distributed over eight-hundred thousand dollars to local charitable causes, including scholarships, community parks, and recreation, local hospital improvements, educational programs, cultural programs, social service assistance, library programs, and international understanding. Whereas the Rotary Club of Vicksburg has played a cooperative role, working in concert with other local groups such as the Vicksburg Lions, Vicksburg Community School, and Vicksburg Foundations to increase the value of their involvement. Now be resolved that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners and recognition of the Rotary Club of Vicksburg's century-long history of charitable contributions to and involvement in the betterment of greater Vicksburg community encourages all communities to follow their lead in living the Rotary International ideal, service above self.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Blue. All right. We do now have a closed session, right? All right. So we are adjourned.[1190.33]
All right, we will call the Calamazoo County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order at seven o'clock. Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, will you lead us in an indication of reflection?
Thank you, Chair, please rise. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Guide this council in making decisions tonight that benefit all of our citizens and residents and businesses here in Calamazoo County. Guide our men and women who protect us both overseas and here, our firemen, policemen, our ambulance folks, our medical people. And we want to ask you to please bless all those who work for Calamazoo County, who live here in Calamazoo County and work here, and make this county a great place to live, work, and play. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. And next we have roll call. Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Commissioner Gissler?
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Here.
Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales? Chair Ray?
Present.
Commissioner Stretts? Vice Chair Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Here.
You have six present.
Thank you. And we have a request for approval of proclamation recognized in April fourteenth through the twentieth as National Volunteer Week.
So moved? Support?
All right, it's been properly moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the motion carries. Then next we have a request of for approval of proclamation recognized in April twenty twenty four as Calamazoo Valley Community College Month.
So moved?
Support?
All right, it's been properly moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number five is communications. Excuse me, we have a few. We have a resolution designating Lapeer County as a Freedom to Home School County, and then Lapeer County Commissioners Resolution opposing Public Act two thirty-three of twenty twenty-three, Resolution Number twenty twenty-four, R zero six. And then Crawford County Resolution supporting local choice ballot initiative, a memo from Taylor Van Winkle, Climate Sustainability Coordinator regarding Michigan Green Communities Challenge, and a resolution supporting the Protect Michigan Kids Bill Package, zero four one one two zero two four PMK. Are there any communications that commissioners would like to share? Administrator Catlin?
Hi Chair, thank you. I apologize. We actually have volunteers from HCS that are here that would like to be recognized as part of that proclamation for the National Volunteer Week if you wouldn't mind indulging them for a picture.
Oh, absolutely.
And then Chair, I guess if you wouldn't mind having either you or a different commissioner read the proclamation as well?
Okay. Everybody's just volunteering this week. Commissioner Morales is just gonna read it. Yeah, the volunteer one? No, we didn't read it.
All right, welcome and thank you. This is a proclamation declaring April twenty-one through twenty-seven as National Volunteer Week and recognizing HCS volunteers for their dedication to serving Calamazoo County. Thank you. Whereas a group of volunteers first formed to disseminate information during the COVID nineteen pandemic through the establishment of a call center on March sixteen, twenty twenty, continue to provide unwavering support to the Calamazoo County Health and Community Services Department years later. And whereas the dedication and selflessness of the HCS volunteers in serving six health department divisions and completing over sixty-eight projects since April of twenty twenty-two equates to more than four thousand work hours or the equivalent of nearly two full-time employees. And whereas the HCS volunteers fulfilled more than three hundred requests for immunization record replacements, assembled nearly six hundred veteran services packages, excuse me, packets, distributed twenty-five thousand letters to community residents regarding COVID vaccines, and assembled ten thousand reproductive health prevention packets, helping to foster a collaborative and efficient work environment post-pandemic. And whereas the Calamazoo County Health and Community Services Department, along with the Board of Commissioners, wish to express gratitude to all volunteers who generously donate their time and talent to address the diverse needs of our community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Calamazoo County Board of Commissioners hereby declares April twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four as National Volunteer Week in Calamazoo County, urging all residents to join in acknowledging and appreciating the impact of volunteers and improving the health of all Calamazoo County residents.
It's already been approved. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
If I could, I just want to recognize these two ladies here, Jane and Janice, have been instrumental from the beginning in terms of from day one throughout COVID for four years now. And that letter or the resolution language really articulates how valuable this group. And these two recommend, they bring it all together. Those are the two that really make this work. And behind them are probably how many volunteers?
Twenty or forty.
Yeah. And it's been exceptional. Some are retired nurses, some are, you know, retired lawyers, but it's been wonderful for us. And I can't tell you how proud I am of these two ladies. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to. It's torture. It'll only be five minutes. Any other communications commissioners like to share? All right, moving on to item six, approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the March nineteen, twenty twenty-four draft committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any discussion? CNN, do we need a roll call vote, clerk? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next up is item number seven, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda with in-between approval of the agenda and public comment. We have the MSU Extension Report.
Moved by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. So next up, we have, I took my notes out from the last meeting, but we have a presentation from Michigan State University Extension.
Is it on now? Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you Commissioner Ray for being accommodating to me this evening. It was really just a test to see if you could amend the agenda appropriately. And I am disappointed that I'm not accompanying the Parks and Rec Department with Dave and Mandy's presentation because we're such good partners. We were looking forward to tag teaming this afternoon, so I just thought he'd be there this evening. So I do appreciate that. And the other irony, if I can just go on and on about this, is that the communications between MSU Extension and the county administration have been so wonderful and really on target in this last year that it's just funny that we didn't get the, I didn't get the memo on the time. So anyway. So it's always a pleasure to present the MSU Extension Annual Report to the County Board of Commissioners. You did receive it in your packet, I hope, and had a chance to review the highlights that were presented there. The report is just a snapshot of some of our programs that we've done in the Calamazoo area. There are many more, and we actually had six hundred and one programs that Calamazoo County residents attended in twenty twenty-three. That's about forty-three hundred residents attended six hundred programs. One hundred and thirty of those programs were held in the Calamazoo County area. So I think that's a pretty impressive number. As you can see from the staff, we have quite a few folks housed upstairs on the third floor. We have eleven people up there. Actually, a few more stragglers from time to time. We're hosting a few desks to the Michigan Natural Features Inventory Team, who works with MSU Extension housed here in Calamazoo. So it's been real convenient for them to work out of our office here in the Administration Building. So we're pleased to have that, them here with us as well. Tonight I do have a few folks in the audience of some who reside upstairs and some who reside elsewhere but program in the community, and I'll let them speak in a second. Our four-H program is on the grow, grow, I'm not going to take that from you. Never mind, Ron is going to talk about that. So we're pleased that our four-H program is healthy and growing in the community. Our website continues to be active in a way that residents get information from MSU Extension, not only important articles and information at a timely basis when they need to see it, but also our web programming is still strong since COVID. Of course, we all had to go online, and we were there before. We really perfected it during COVID, and things have really continued to be strong at webinars as well as face-to-face programs. So it's really created more opportunities for Calmazoo residents, again, to get the programs, the education they need when they need it, whether that be taped recordings of programs or live interactive programs. A lot of our live interactive programs are recorded and then kept on the web for later use. So it's really, we're really developing a robust information network. For those of you that have been around, maybe, I don't know, we used to have the old extension bulletins, right? Where we had rooms and rooms full of papers and things like that. All of that information is becoming, is all electronic now. And so we've just made that shift. It's just kind of neat. I've been with Extension for thirty years, and I think we're in a really good place right now in being able to meet the needs of the residents. Your funding is really helpful to us. It leverages the dollars from the state and federal and grants that we get to fund MSU Extension. The total Michigan State University budget is about ninety-three million. So your about three hundred thousand really helps leverage all of those other funds and bring them to bear on the needs that Calamazoo County residents face. So with that, I will ask all of you to rise. And Nancy, why don't you go first and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Nancy Hostetler. I am the Office Administrator Support Staff. I am the one that makes sure that these guys get their jobs done right, then can concentrate on what they do. And I help take up the slack on the backend. I also do a monthly newsletter. If you're interested in receiving that, it is electronic. I believe you have our email. And also, I take care of some of the things on the website. If you see any problems, let me know.
So Nancy is our county employee, and so she really bridges us with county communications. And Alvin Gray, your Director of DEI, has been working with Nancy and myself to make sure that she is reviewing and has taken the DEI modules, and we kind of comparing them to what MSU Extension offers. So it's kind of been a little project we've been working on a little last few months. It's kind of neat. Next, we have my, our community nutrition instructors, and we have three at this time. So Valerie Snyder, Amanda Hewlett, and Jane Toll. Valerie's been with us about a month. Come on up, Valerie. Valerie's been with us about a month, and so she's learning the ropes. I see she prepared some remarks, so if you don't mind a little letter.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Essentially, in our roles as a community nutrition instructors, we lead programs from young children to senior citizens. So, you know, it can be schools and senior community centers and so forth, but primarily reaching low-income populations that are eligible for what we refer to as SNAPED or Assistance with a Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So later this month, I am excited to be participating in a Calamazoo event. It is called, I'm looking here, a five K Oxkrot Goat Scroll. So if anybody wants to participate, it is going to be fun. You can bring your friends, family. Anyway, I do have that information. So, but I'm really happy to have joined the team with the Michigan State University Extension.
Thanks, Valerie. Jane just.
Hi, I'm Amanda Hewlett. I've been here for twenty-four years. And one of the biggest schools right now that I'm working with is North Blaine Montessori. I'm seeing the kindergartners all the way up through the fourth and fifth grade, and so I'm really excited about being here in Calamazoo and taking care of the kids here, so.
My name is Jane Toll, and I'm also a community nutrition instructor. I've been with the organization for three years. I work primarily in Calamazoo Public Schools, Parchment School District, and I partner with Integrated Services of Calamazoo to work with adult groups in some of the various properties that Integrated Services has.
So let's see, let's do our ag folks next. So Jeremy and Nicole?
Hi, my name is Nicole Ritchie. I just started with MSU Extension about three months ago, and I work as the Southwest Michigan Field Crops Agronomy Educator, so I work with local farmers. And I work as the Southwest Michigan Field Crops Agronomy Educator, so I work with local farmers to make sure that we're adopting best practices and adapting those practices as new research comes to light.
Short and sweet. Good, because I have lots to talk about. And I'm going to try to keep it short because I can gush about my industry. So, good evening. My name is Jeremy Jubinville. I am a floriculture and greenhouse agent here in, at Michigan State University Extension. In my job, I primarily work with commercial flower growers over seven counties here in southwest Michigan. I am based right here in Kalamazoo. I've been in Manja for about seven years. I like these opportunities because they allow me to brag a little bit about the industry and also tell you a little bit about what I do. So I do see some new faces here, so I'm going to go through this a little bit. So you may not know this, but Michigan is the third largest producer of floricultural crops in the United States and the largest young plant producer in, in the nation. We are third in Christmas tree production, sixteenth in nursery production, and seventh in cut flower production. That brings a combined total of eight hundred and fifty million dollars in ornamental crop sales. That's not even including the supporting industries, which easily pushes that number above a billion dollars. And I say that, I go through all that to say, to talk about, about how awesome Kalamazoo County is. So as some of you may know, so floriculture is a very vibrant and historic tradition we have here. We have fifteen million square feet of greenhouse space, which is more than any other county in the state. And it's more than double of the next largest county. We are bedding plant central of the state of Michigan. Our county is unique in that floriculture accounts for a full fifty percent of agricultural crop sales here. And as of two thousand seventeen, that accounted for approximately about a hundred and sixteen million. And I can tell you, I can assure you that it has only gone up over the past five years or so. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two were banner years, and our greenhouse growers are doing very, very well. The things that I do, so my job is to support this industry. And some of the things that I do usually fall into three categories. I do frontline troubleshooting and diagnostics, which really accounts for just going in there. This is my favorite part of the job. So what's wrong with my plants? What's going on? How can, can you help me solve this problem? Or just sometimes they just want to bounce some ideas off of me. Like a lot of other extension agents, I will do educational programming, both in person and online. And it's a wide, a wide range of topics on some of the things like greenhouse emergency preparedness, worker safety. I'm developing curriculum on employing engagement. So that involves with the focus of culture and branding, a variety of different things. I teach a lot of courses on biological control. I am formally trained as an entomologist, so I'm a bug guy. On top of being a plant guy, it's one of my favorite things to do. And which brings me into the resource development that I do. So I do a lot of work with the pest management, develop a lot of materials. Some of the recent stuff I've done is develop an insect management guide for the entire state. I do a lot of work. I also produce some advisement for greenhouse managers on developing respirator programs for their workers so we can keep them safe. So that gives you a very brief overview. I'm going to hold it here because, man, I can talk about this. But I am housed up there on the third floor with everybody else. And if you want to talk flowers, I'm your guy. Thanks a lot. Yep.
So our Community Natural Resources folks are at annual meetings, so none of those from that larger program are here tonight. So last but not least, our four-H staff.
Good evening. My name is Sam Lawrence. I am the Urban Four-H Program Coordinator. I will keep mine very short. I can't go on and on like Jeremy over there, but I am building partnerships with after-school programs here. I've been working with Elconcelio, NINIAS, the Streets Program, the YMCA, and the Juvenile Keys Program. I have been providing them with STEM and life skills programs. And then off of those partnerships, I kind of do one-off events like fishing programs. Or just last week, I did an eclipse program in Bronson Park. So it's kind of my gist. Veronica, go for it.
And I'm Veronica Ballas. I'm the other four-H program coordinator and I've been staffed about thirteen years. Like Jeremy, I could go on and on, but I won't. But I wanted you guys to know, we are continuing to grow. Our numbers of kids growing animals or raising animals this year is grown, has just doubled almost. We went from having eight turkeys last year. We have twenty-eight that'll be auctioned off this year. Our pig numbers have grown, so a lot more kids are raising their animals, which is really cool because they're not only learning to raise that animal, but they're learning about all those life skills that go along with it, the responsibility, the caring. We teach a class called YQCA, which is the Youth Quality Care Assurance Program. And each year it rotates. This year they're learning about the willful abuse of animals and how to detect that, both with other, you know, just within the community and within people and what to do if they see people abusing animals, which is really important. We are continuing to do after-school programs. COVID didn't help any of our kids with their mental health. So I've been doing, going in and doing after-school programs, a lot of mindfulness and teaching kids about their emotions and what, what those emotions, what those words are that they might need to use and how to facilitate those emotions when they're frustrated and angry, what to do with those emotions. We have exploration days coming up in June. It's a pre-college scholar, or pre-college event where kids spend three days on campus. We have thirty-five kids going this year. Thirty of them are brand new to going to exploration days and being on a college campus. They'll stay in the dorms, they'll eat dorm food, they'll take classes. And that is partially funded by our Leaders Council and by funds through TSC. So if you go to TSC, make sure to buy your clovers in a couple of weeks. We're also doing, still doing stuff around pollination. So if you guys have heard me before, I do a lot with beekeeping and, and native bees, teaching kids. If, I should have brought my native bee house. If you go to a local big box store and you see one that's three and a half inches, don't buy it. Come talk to me. We'll teach you about how to make the right ones. We also have been doing our Wild Spartans program that's in your bulletin. It's an environmental education program that we're doing online via Zoom once a month on Tuesday nights from October through March. And kids can learn about just different jobs around environmental education or environmental outdoor education and what that looks like. So everything from beekeeping to trout to working with bears. I'm trying to get ahold of somebody down in Florida that works with sharks and tagging sharks, so that, that may be us next fall. And then if you guys didn't know, this April is Month of the Military Child, and we're celebrating military children. Four-H does have a partnership nationally with our military programs. And each installation across the world is required to have a four-H program on it. So this month we're doing a goose chase. We have fifty-five families who are learning about different aspects of the military along with four-H. And through that, earning some prizes and those kinds of things. So thank you again for all your support. Come out to the fair. Our auction is on Friday. I will challenge you guys again. Pull your money, come buy an animal.
So thank you very much for your time. If there are any questions, we can take those now.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Agriculture is one of our three major industries in the state of Michigan, industrial tourism and agriculture. So what you do is fantastic, and we really appreciate all your hard work in, in helping our, 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 our flower and that industry because we know it's centered right here in Kalamazoo County, something to be very proud of. I do have one request to see if maybe you guys could convince them to restart doing the, the sap, the, the.
Maple syrup?
Maple syrup thing back out at Fort Custer. They used to do that. And I'd take my little granddaughter and she was so excited about it, and they haven't done it in about five, six years and.
Do you mean at Kellogg Forest?
Kellogg Forest, yeah. They, where they make the syrup.
Well, and Christine Charles, our regenerative ag educator, actually is housed out there, so she'd be the one to sort of, she's, she's getting the ins and outs of that, so, yeah. At least at KBS, Kellogg's a little different.
We, we have a lot of people that do gather the syrup. I don't know where they're going with it now. I mean, they did gather the sap. I shouldn't say syrup. They gathered the sap. It takes a lot of sap to make a little bit of syrup, but it is so educational and so many people would come to, to Kellogg Forest to see how it was done, and we, we enjoyed having it. But we enjoy all you do and we appreciate the bio station out there that they work on all these things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quick, thank you Julie for what you do in, in that office and MSU Extension throughout the state. We, earlier at the four o'clock meeting, just kind of.
Which I was supposed to be at.
No, no worries. But there was a program from the PACE program that, that was there. And talking with their, listening to the, the, I'm sorry, I forgot Jeremy is, is, yeah, the flower guy was speaking. We were, but one of the things I think that the PACE program could really help in the flower industry is those interest-free loans that's attached to the property for energy efficiency. I know energy is probably one of the biggest expenditures for a lot of these flower growers, keeping the place warm over the winter. So that could be a good avenue to, to look at. We've only had one project.
Yeah, I'll share that with Jeremy. That's really good, good idea. We'll see where that can go. Yeah.
No?
No, all right.
Julie and team, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is a time when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come up to the podium. Excuse me. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed, and once your three minutes are up, your time to speak is finished. This is a time to provide input in a professional, respectful manner. Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comments?
Hi, I'm not sure that I'm at the right place for the right thing. I am here, my name is Carrie Sluter. I live at, on Lake Street. And I am here about the project that they're putting in for the pods on Lake Street. Am I in the right place, in the right meeting, to address this?
Sure.
I, I just have a couple of things that I, I want, I want the city to consider before a project like this goes next door to my home. I have children in the neighborhood. It is a homeless camp. Are, are you, are you all familiar with the project that they're putting out for HRI, HRI is putting out for homeless pods on the corner of Lake Street? Okay, so I just want to make a couple of comments. I have seen, I'm not opposed to helping people and giving people who are homeless a home, but I don't believe that this project is something that needs to be in a, in a district, a business district with homes and families and schools. There's several of the homeless people are, you know, out of prison, out of jail. They have drug issues. They have drinking issues. My kids are already in a struggled, struggling area in Edison. And who's going to guarantee that my kids aren't going to find drug paraphernalia and more liquor bottles on the streets and sidewalks where they ride their bikes and bike? I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's a wise decision. Also, the ground that they're talking about putting that at is next to Juliana's Restaurant. These, there's a lot of homeless people that will approach you begging for money, and if you say no, they can get very irritable. They can get very angry at you. They can, I've seen it at the convenience stores, and we don't want to see that in the restaurants. This is going to destroy our, you know, Edison neighborhood in that area. It's, it could destroy the businesses. My kids already lose bikes constantly. They can't have a bike out in the yard, and they're stolen. But these people that are going to be there, we don't know who they are, you know, from one day to the next. It's temporary housing, so they're going to come and go. But also, you know, they don't have vehicles. My kids' bikes are going to be gone, even more than they are already. And I'm a taxpaying citizen. I pay and I work hard to build up my house to make it valuable for my children and a safe home. So I'm asking that you consider the families in the neighborhoods and the children in that neighborhood before you put something like that next to them. They drag in a lot of garbage. We all know that. The city has had to clean up messes before. I work hard to keep my gardens up. I, I have things out there that I can see them being taken or stomped on, and, and I just prefer to not have more trouble brought into my neighborhood. That we're already trying to work to get it a better place. And I don't think this is going to help to bring in more trouble to an already troubled and struggling community where we are trying to upgrade it and then to put that in. Also, my home value would, would be, could be suffering or damaged to my home.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Do I have to sign someone?
Nope. Hello.
Thank you. Good evening. Toby Hannah-Davies. I'm, I'm also here to talk about the pods in support. I know this isn't your decision. It's an HRI project. But there's been a lot of concern, so I wanted to speak tonight. Most of us know someone who has had really hard things happen to them in life, things that made it impossible to pay all their regular bills, like a big medical bill or a big car repair bill. Some of us have had that experience ourselves. And some of us are the ones who helped out a relative or a friend who needed help to pay those bills so they could stay in their home or get to their job. And our compassion made a huge difference, but not all families can help. And that's how homelessness starts for many people. I want people who are concerned about the pods to relax. Whatever their worst fears are about the pods, I want them to know that the pod community is nothing like a homeless encampment. It's a big step, much better than a homeless encampment. It's a managed community with round-the-clock supportive staff and round-the-clock security. It will be gated for everyone's security and comfort. And it's a place where the people living there will have security, stability, privacy, and dignity, dignity, things that, that human beings need before we can recover from whatever's gone wrong in our lives. Pod communities are successful in other cities. So I'm asking everybody listening to, please give our pod community a chance. Don't assume everything you hear is true. Please go to the meetings that Housing Resources, Inc. will be holding to get your questions answered. And please imagine that one of the people who needs a pod is your own son or daughter, or your nephew or niece, or someone else you love. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Hi, my name is Haley Clutt. I work for Juliana's Restaurant. I've been there for twenty-five years. I've grown up in that neighborhood. I've seen the chaos in the neighborhood from people just walking through our back door in the morning. But the, also the other issue is the contamination that you're going to put these homeless encampments at. Nobody has talked about the contamination issue where they're going to place these pods. And that's very important. Why would you place homeless people in a contaminated area? Especially the third one in Edison neighborhood. And I think everybody in this right mind needs to understand that. But we also, as business owners and people that work in the neighborhood, see this development going on, and it's creating havoc. Nobody is protecting us. People walk through my back door. I call the cops. There's nothing nobody wants to do for us. They send them on their way. People, the cops drop people off at the corner just to move them from other places. What needs to happen is everybody needs to understand this lot where you guys want to put this pod system is contaminated. I have reports on it. I've, I've dug into it. It's contaminated, and it needs to be dealt with before you put people on this property. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else. Dina, is there anyone online?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Dina. Item number nine, consent agenda items. Commissioner Marals, would you like to read the consent agenda? Thank you. Let's see, I want to volunteer. Just to you. It doesn't matter to me. All right. Thank you, Chair. I know I mentioned I was in classes, but you know, I was reading. I'm just playing. Hold on, I got it.
Hold on, I got it. All right. Under administration, item number three oh seven, request to authorize the county administrator controller to execute a contract amendment with CMS Group. Under Board of Commissioners, four oh eight, request to review and approval of AY twenty twenty-one and AY twenty twenty-two. Number, item number seven, request for approval of appointments to the Older Adult Services Advisory Council. Item number nine, request for approval of appointment to Economic Development Corporation, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Item number four fifty-four, request to formally remove recession and reallocation of ARPA grant award. Item number four fifty-eight, request to approve an ARPA contractual amendment between the county and Trauma Recovery Associates. Under the clerk, item number four one five, request for approval to authorize the county clerk and board chair to sign annual nine one one surcharge collection letter. Under District Court, item number four, request for approval to create two lean positions. Under Equalization, item number four one one, request for approval to accept the twenty twenty-four Kalamazoo County Equalization Report. Item number four one two, request for approval of resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four Kalamazoo County Equalization Report. Under Finance, item number two one six, recommendation for approval of accounts payable and payroll dispersments. Item number four three six, request for approval of various budget adjustments and transfers. Item number four one six, request for approval for the use of single-source vendor for county-wide furniture and installation purchases. Under Health and Community Services, item number three two two, request for approval of a budget transfer from the senior millage to the area agency on aging. Item number three three one, request for approval and signature of provider contract amendment number one. Item number three three nine, request for acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act Statement of Grant Award. Item number two eight four, request for approval and signature of FECHA software license agreement. Item number one nine zero, request for one acceptance of MDHHS Fiscal Year Twenty Four Comprehensive Agreement, Amendment Number Two. And two for Health Officer Director to electronically sign amendment within E grams on county's behalf. Item number four three four, request for approval and signature of an amendment to an agreement with Western Michigan University Homer Stryker MD School of Medicine for evaluation of the Healthy Babies Healthy Start Project. Item number four four two, request for approval and signature of an amendment to an agreement with Western Michigan University Homer Stryker MD School of Medicine for Home-Based Care. Under Housing, item number three six five, request for approval and signature of a grant amendment with the YWCA. Under Human Resources, item number two seven two, request for approval and signature of affiliation agreement between Kalamazoo County Government and Western Governors University. I don't have the script, but. I move that this all be voted on as one.
All right, move by Commissioner Morales, supported by Vice Chair Taylor. Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Strabs. Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Heffler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Chair Ray.
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you, clerk. Next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is a time for when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed. And once your three minutes are up, your time of speak is finished. This is a time to provide input in a professional, respectful manner. Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comment? Seeing none. Dina, any online?
Chair, there is nobody online.
Thank you so much, Dina. Item thirteen, reports of officers, bodies, administrator controller. I do not have a report.
I'll be relatively quick. We just passed our equalization report today. Huge deal, eight point one seven percent increase in taxable value. I believe, I can't go, I can't go far enough back and find a higher one. I think that's a record. We budgeted three five in the last budget, so we're going to have a little bit extra money in our, on the tax side. So as we go through and some, some of these things pop up, you know, when we get our audit back, we realize what our carryover was from last year. You know, the golden rule, we've got some big things coming in the county. But there's also some big things that we can do in the community as well. So taking that balance, I'm willing to work with administration and commissioners to try to meet that balance and spend the money where we need to in the community, but also saving it for the projects that we need to do at the county. But looking forward to the next budget cycle, guys. So it's going to be a fun one.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Vice Chair Brozen.
Thank you, Chair. I agree. I think things are running well. And I look forward to working with our administration and the commission to fund those things that are working for our community. And as we say, we want to keep community Kalamazoo County running smooth and efficiently. I ask folks to, again, please think of all those who are looking out for us, whether it be the military or local fire and police or medical, our staff. We have a great staff that works diligently for our county. We have some bad weather probably coming in tonight, so I ask everybody to be safe. Don't put yourself in danger and keep your family safe and look forward to a good future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brozen. Administrator Kaplan.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem and Commissioners. Want to thank you all this evening for productive evening and thank the staff for all the work they put into the packets. Takes a lot of work and a lot of planning and execution, so we appreciate that. Just two really quick updates. One, a pretty important one. Is this an update on our corporation council position? We have yet to receive any applicants. And so I think that we would like to deviate from original strategy. And we have posted the position for the assistant corporation councils. And so what we'd like to do is bring one of them on board, begin learning the matter management system. And then that way, when a new corporation council is hired, that new corporation council doesn't have to get up to speed so much on that, on that system. We have some candidates that we can interview for that right away, get them on board, sort of curtail some of these legal costs that we're incurring, have them review more mundane, sort of routine contractual agreements that obviously appear in our packets. And then my plan would be is to more immediately, in the near future, work with the board to hire a recruiter to conduct a national search for a corporation council. We've posted the position statewide, so it was in the Michigan State Bar. We had no hits. We also posted it, you know, on our, through our normal channels that receive interest from, obviously, statewide individuals. But we're just not meeting the mark there. So there are some recruiters that we've, have been able to review our piece for, through request proposal that we published a while back, that we can tap some of them or open up something different. But we think that a more national approach to this is prudent. That way, we can hopefully entice someone to, one of them work for Kalamazoo County, maybe bring them back from a different state that they may be in, bring them back home. So just an update on that. And then lastly, just a reminder that Monday, April twenty-second, is our strategic planning session at Comstock Township Offices at five PM. So we'll have dinner. It's a public meeting. But we'll be meeting with, obviously, the board, department heads, the two chief judges and the court administrators, as well as, obviously, the countywide elected. So should be a very good session. And that'd be the first meeting that our strategic planning consultant will be on site. So it should be a good time and hopefully we can craft that vision in anticipation of the budget for the future. So happy to answer any questions about these two topics or anything else you may have questions on.
Thank you, Administrator. Next one.
One, I do agree with you completely, but actually, I'll start with a question. What is the K-band for the corporation council? Do you know that off the top of your head?
I do. So it's a, it's a K one fifteen.
It's a K one fifteen, so that, still at a B or a C step, we still having a hard time getting qualified applicants. I do agree that we're going to need a search for that. You know, our budget, how much Angelina saved us last year, we were spending, and we budgeted a million dollars for outside legal services. We were hitting about three, four hundred thousand of outside legal services, saving six hundred thousand dollars by having one full-time attorney in-house. You know, minus what her salaries and stuff are. But I, I think we need a corporate council. We need a firm of people that will save us a lot of money in the long run. National search, I do, I think that's a good idea in one aspect. The one hesitation I have is just the difference in bar between states and the state government and the relationships between the counties and the, and corporation councils from one state to the next might have vast differences. I'm just guessing here. But, you know, if I, whatever it takes, I, you know, I fully support you guys and what you guys decide. But I do think that's a priority.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about, you said you have some candidates for what position?
So for the, the two subordinates to the corporation council. So there are two attorney, there's one attorney two position and then an attorney three. So an assistant corporation council and then a senior assistant corporation.
So what's the difference in qualifications between those candidates?
I would say just the level of experience. So really, your assistant corporation councils are really going to be the ones that are looking more at the, I say, routine contractual agreements, things like that. The actual corporation council is more of a strategic partner to the board, departmentarian. They're working with department heads and such to really drive home that.
And so the others don't have those qualifications?
Not within their job descriptions, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gisler.
Thank you, Chair. Kevin, if I recall correctly, Angelina left us the first few days of February. Did we post right around that time? So it's been out there since then. And we're getting zero, huh?
That's correct. Yeah, so we posted it, I want to say, maybe a week after she left. And then, and then shortly, I'd say about maybe two to three weeks afterwards, that's when we posted in the actual Michigan State Bar. It took a while to get it in there. They have a whole process, but it was posted within the State Bar for a whole month. And we had no hits on that.
Thank you. I totally concur with the idea of posting it broader and setting up possibly to bring the underlings in first if you have to wait to get the chief counsel. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Administrator. Commissioner DeLu.
Actually, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gisler. I also want to know if you can give us an update on why we don't have direct flights from Kalamazoo, Orlando. No, serious? It just got paused, but they didn't tell us why.
Well, I'll start with that. This is the last time you're going to see me wave this thing around. I'm totally embarrassed. I had no idea they were going to discontinue the flights through the summer, probably. They'll be back in October, November. They haven't announced when. But apparently, I'm unfamiliar with the seasonality of flying. And they are a startup discount airline. And therefore, they can't ride through the soft spots in their schedule with the fact that they're sitting on a pile of money. They're not. They have to kind of pay as they go. And, you know, I don't think they lost a lot of money on these tickets, these discounts. Yeah. But anybody want these as a souvenir? I've got them. They're not worth anything now, except as a souvenir. You had to bring it up, didn't you? Well, I've been getting emails and phone calls and some of them sort of with their tongue in their cheek saying, what are you doing out there? Anyway, I have a couple of serious things. One, I want to make sure that we mention that the Charles A. Pratt Justice Center is going to be dedicated on September seventh. I know everybody here knows that, but I want to make sure everybody that might be listening to us or seeing us knows that. And there's another meeting coming up in May that's very important. Excuse me, May fifteenth, Don Saldia, the head of our area agency on aging, is going to be addressing the supervisors of all the township supervisors in Kalamazoo County. The meeting will be at the Comstock Township Hall, the new one. And it's going to be discussing by jurisdiction how much you got back in the way of constituency services and product and whatever from the money that your jurisdiction paid into the senior millage. So I think it's going to be a good one to attend if you've got that kind of a thought in your head. We ought to know what we get back. We know what we're paying, but let's see what the return is. So mark that down. May fifteenth, Don Saldia at Comstock. And that meeting starts at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales.
I don't really have anything. It is National Stress Month, so hopefully. So while we have this weather, my tulips have blossomed. So go smell a flower. Go get some flowers to plant so we can help the pollinators so we can have some good honey to fight off these allergies that I had all weekend. Communication-wise, we, I did receive, and I'm sure everybody did, some communication regarding how we should reallocate those funds that were returned in regard to trauma and wellness. Other than that, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioners. There's nothing else where I joined.